Potentially could draw from those funds were we to do something here.
On behalf of those, uh, yeah.
Right.
The taxless landowners.
Mr. Nara.
I think we have about nine districts that have active tax rolls, but we've already set those taxes for this year. Most of them, we're bringing them back to, uh, a small maintenance fund. I don't know if we've got five thousand dollars across those nine. You also have some intercon- intercounting ones, uh, McCandless, the Sand Hill, some of the ones across the county line are and are administered by the Monona County Board. Uh, we don't know what the status of any of those are.
Yeah, I wonder if they spend all of our money?
Well, it's hard to say, but, you know, that, those don't come through this board, but they are taxed through Monona County.
Right.
Passed along through the quarter's office and added to those folks' levies and then money goes directly down to, uh, you know. Um, but you, you don't have a lot of money in there right now to cover those. I don't know if drainage warrants would be all that welcome to the Drainage District Association, which is what I end up having to, uh, pass along to.
So in planning, we probably ought to look to the next budget year.
We would have to look to the next budget year if you want to have, uh, money available at that level. Our drainage district dues now are about, uh, six or seven hundred dollars a year and we distribute that through all the districts based on their total acreage compared to the acreage of the total covered districts outside of the Garrettson and the non-farmers.
This was a pretty, uh, big topic at the last state, um, county meeting and there was some, I guess, I mean, it's pressure, but there was encouragement to, um, you know, join the lawsuit. I didn't see a lot of counties jumping on board necessarily, but, but it did come up. I'm sure it will come up again, um, because it is a large issue. I'll make a motion at table.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. I guess I would say, uh, I'm glad to know that you're in it too and understand what's going on. Well, I gotta, you know, as I think about how this could evolve, it could go in a lot of different directions than if it became, uh, if the lawsuit went in the direction of, yes, there is, and gee, it's everywhere, we're in trouble. Things will have to change in a hurry if, uh, if this was completely lost.
There are areas where we change the nature of agricultural drainage and farming and, and just part of the service. I, I think it is something we should continue to monitor and, and then decide whether or not it's, uh, of issue to the board or something where you would want to front the money or something and get it paid back out of the districts. Uh, I was definitely suggest you continue to monitor whether it does go to trial and if there is assistance at that point.
I think that's the point, but we should bring this back up and also appreciate the trustees coming and keeping us informed.
On the flip side, if you were standing on the other side of the aisle, it certainly is a wake-up call on how we're doing business. I think there needs to be a lot more thought put into how things are being done, uh, down the road. Now, I know I hear the folks on, um, Ag Day and all those programs and, oh, we've been planning for this for years, but they're, I think they need to, uh, look at reality and that's, things may have changed, you know, in some way. Maybe it's the people making the stuff that should make it more friendly. I don't know. Enough of my editorial. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Thanks for coming.
Now, the other two items on here, are they going to just come through on war- uh, bill?
Say what?
Are the other two, the county dues and, uh, future protections that is going to run bill?
I don't know. Uh, I just know that that was sent to us as a guideline.
That just can't come through on it.
Imagine Karen.
Karen?
The Drainage District Association dues, you'll just submit a claim for those? Yeah, but that's what we usually do, past practice?
Yeah, 'cause this, this is the bill for all three of them.
Right.
Mark, yeah, once you make a decision on the, your, your normal dues, uh, will do the distribution across the, uh, districts for it. Um, I was waiting to find out whether you were wanting to pay that five thousand dollars. Uh, and we want a clarification on what that was before, uh, before we do it, but now we can't pay our, our association dues anyway. There we go. Based on this decision and, and I think the board sending along a letter to let them know that, uh, it's still under consideration to assist with the lawsuit, but at this time you're not joining them.
Karen, can you bring back the dues? Thank you. Okay. Gary.
Good afternoon, Gary Graham, Woodbury County Emergency Services. I set the, uh, request for board action form. Uh, what we're asking for today is the board to authorize the chairman to sign, uh, a letter to the Missouri River Historical Development Board, uh, which would authorize us to apply for up to a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar grant from MRR. Uh, what we're intending to do is we've got one unit, we call it two zero eight, so our largest vehicle. It's used at the scene of fires, confined space rescues, brain bin rescue. Um, it's used for scuba diving when we have divers in the water. It's the only mobile air compressor in the county that can generate, uh, breathing quality air to put into the confined space tanks. So, um, in an effort to try to save some taxpayer dollars, we're going to try to apply for a grant and see if we can do any good with that. Uh, we've got the support of most of the fire departments already in the county are signing letters of support to, towards this project. So it would be a capital improvement item that we would budget for in the near future. It's about a quarter of a million dollar expenditure, so.
Need a motion?
Over.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Okay. Thank you. Now, next item up for bid. Secretary Rhodes.
Got a couple of easy ones. The first one is for, uh, issuing a certificate of completion for grading and drainage work on Andrew Avenue and two fortieth Street. Uh, this route provides a, uh, oh, I'm sorry. This is, uh, our, uh, haul route, uh, down to support the CF Industries project.
Need a motion?
Over.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
The, uh, second one we have is a certificate of completion for, uh, two hundred and twentieth and Grundy Avenue. This is the alternative, uh, route for Bridge, uh, P six. It was a little free con trust by the Arnold Farm and, uh, providing a, uh, a route to get them out around that bridge.
Need a motion? Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Uh, next we're requesting approval of plans for our, uh, rise paving project. And this is for the, uh, main plant road going into the, uh, new CF Industries North site. Uh, it also includes the, uh, uh, construction of turning lanes along Port Neal Road and two hundred and fifty fifth Street.
Need a motion?
Love to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Uh, we'll be setting a letting date on that as soon as the, uh, uh, DOT returns their comments on our final plans. The, uh, final item we have today, or I'm, I'm sorry, the, uh, next item we have today is the, uh, approval of contracts for Schmelten Construction for crushing our PCC, Portland Substate Concrete and Hot Mix Asphalt, uh, stockpiles at, uh, Luden and at the, uh, Correctionville area.
Need a motion? Need a second? Or as they say up se- up north, need support?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Do they have any flooding?
Uh, yes, we do. And, uh, we have, uh, Highway one forty-one near the, uh, West Fork, uh, Bridge is currently closed to traffic at, uh, both the east and the west sides of the bridge. Um, we have, uh, water flowing over one forty-one in both those areas. Uh, two hundred and ninetieth Street, uh, immediately north of there is closed as well as is Hancock Avenue. So that entire, uh, bottom north of one forty-one on the west fork right now is, uh, uh, above road level with, uh, the current flood stage. Uh, we anticipate it being closed overnight. Um.
What about Hornick?
I, I have not seen anything where, where Hornick is at risk at this point in time. That would be more toward the, uh, Garrettson and, uh, Farmers Ditches that would, uh, be constraining that. Seems like, uh, our rain, uh, from the reports I've had have been concentrated between one forty-one and, uh, roughly thirty-one and then from Highway twenty down to one forty-one is where the biggest rains are reported to me. Um, north of twenty, I was hearing three to three and a half inches. Uh, south of twenty within that area, we heard up to six and a half inches. A lot of water was coming in.
About the Bronson Bridge down there, how'd that do?
Um, Bronson, I thought, did pretty well. Um, we'll see how it looks when the water comes down. But, um, you know, everything, uh, with the riprap going through there, flow looked good, uh, you know, the bridge, uh, carried it well. Um, there was, the, uh, new culvert really didn't get tested under the road there. It was just a trickle going through there and flowing through the park. Uh, most of it had been collected by, uh, Elliott Creek, which is the mainstream going into there.
Let's speed it up toward one forty-one?
Um, different areas, uh, different parts of the tributary. Elliott Creek flows into the Farmers District. Um, once it crosses, uh, um, one forty-one after going through the Bronson Bridge, it joins Whiskey Creek. Um, that's the, the, uh, other main, uh, tributary coming in from the north. So, um, like I say, really Bronson looked like it was taking the, the flows well today. I'm more concerned about a little driveway bridge up on that stream than I am Bronson ever getting some problems.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
We have one more.
You got one more?
We're working pickup trucks.
Uh-oh.
We took bids for two half-ton pickup trucks for use by engineering staff last week. Um, recommending purchase of the, uh, Ford, two, twenty fifteen Ford F- one fifty from Jensen Dealerships for twenty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and then, um, uh.
Nine hundred and ninety?
Eight hundred and ninety. Twenty-one thousand eight ninety and then, uh.
Different in our pocket.
It's seventy-one hundred.
The big ninety on the bed sheet.
Yeah, it, it should be eight ninety. I think you got the same sheet I do, but. Okay. Well, it should be twenty-one eight ninety 'cause it's seventy-one hundred dollar trade-in value. Forgive me, that was a typo on that. It should be twenty-one eight ninety is what the correct price should be. Um, that was a typo on my part with the, uh, information sheet. And then the second one is the, uh, trading the Dodge Durango toward a twenty-sixteen Chevrolet Silverado with Kneffler Chevrolet for twenty-three thousand four ninety.
Wait.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Thank you, sir. We, um, I want to get to the Anson meeting. I thought it was marvelous. Uh, Mr. Nara, fantastic job. Matthew and I were talking, we couldn't answer those questions if we had to.
Thank you.
So now you're required to go to all of them.
That was the conclusion of the talk is that we can't schedule another rural meeting without Mark Nara being present.
Actually, Dennis and David did a great job. Uh, the sheriff did a great job. Uh, it, I was absolutely surprised at the number of people. I tried to count, uh, I think I got something close to sixty. I was amazed. Now, about seven or eight were county people, but.
Do you still think there's a disconnect though between what we're telling them and, and I feel like on the downside of it, um, we're going out saying, we've got all this money coming in. And then when they say what we have a need in this area, this area, this area, you know, we say, well, sorry, can't help. So I just think we need to be careful.
Yes, we do.
Um.
We have about four years to get it straight.
Because it's, well, right.
Ooh.
I think, I'd like to get it straight sooner than four years, actually. Um, I did call up, um, David Gleiser and I know he's got something in the works. And you had brought it up too with the strategic planning for the cities. Now, if we could speed that up and perhaps go out and actually have something to offer now.
Exactly.
I think that might be, um, if the board chooses to do that. That could be something that, that's in the present because I just think it, it's difficult evidently to understand. The presentations I thought had improved actually. I thought both presentations were good. There's none of reflection on that. But those are difficult concepts and I just think, I try to put myself in, in their shoes and they have real needs right now. They, you know, the fire and the rescue, those are, you know, those are real, real needs. So for us to go out and say, well, guess what? We have all this money, but no, we can't help you with anything right now. I just think there's a disconnect on what we're, somewhere along the line is a disconnect and, and if we can improve that.
Well, part of the problem is we don't have the money now.
I, I understand that.
Well, it's important that we let them know that too. Because they're hearing a lot of stuff.
And you said, and, and, but I don't know if they heard it. You know, we're going to go hear Carl Roke. He has this book out. It's not what you say, it's what you hear. And what they're, I'm not sure they're hearing or understanding what we're telling them. So I don't know how to change it up. Um, I'm sorry that I don't have a, a, you know, real good, um, remedy for this other than if we could go out maybe with the, if we, if the board adopted, um, a plan for strategic planning for the cities. That might be something that could be rolled out immediately at the next meeting. I, I don't know.
I, I, you know, I see what you're saying. I'm, I'm not sure that was all that happened at the meeting.
It's not all that happened, but I, to me, I think there's just a disconnect. The attendance is great. The people want to hear things. They're glad we're out there. I'm glad we're out there. It's just, I almost feel badly when we leave that we've said, you know, well, we've got the, all this money and sorry, you know, we can't help anything.
I didn't get it that way. I really didn't get it that way.
I know, but that's the way I, that, that's how I felt when I.
A lot of the questions we get from the rural communities don't really pertain so much to the more meatier presentations. It's a lot of it, a lot of it is, you know, we had a question on, on, you know, cemeteries and, and what we ended up doing was just directing that person to the right, the right source and it wasn't the board. So, and I respect a lot of the question and answer, I think, helped, but is, in regards to strategic planning, you know, that, these communities don't necessarily know that, you know, the board is going to put that on them for the, the next few years when we have, when we have this money. Uh, but they need to, you know, come up with a strategic plan on their own and not rely on the county and actually come to us with some sort of a game plan. So it is a lot of kind of, you know, a presentation and then kind of a letdown that we don't have. We can't help you right now with a lot of different things, but, but just as a, as a town hall format, it, it's, every, every community is going to be different. They're going to have different questions and, you know, maybe we need to begin the, the two major county presentations with more of, you know, some caveats from the board's perspective, like the strategic planning is going to need to come from you and this is.
Or more of a lis- you know, a listening tour, if you will, or, or, I don't know, something, it, I mean, just think about, think about it.
What's happened with the first two is it's fired them up. Um, Mobile, after we were there, had a city council meeting and the council said, what are we waiting on? Let's get going. Before that meeting, they were saying, well, we better not spend any money. So, I mean, they really lit a fire under them. Uh, and talking with the mayor of Anson, he says, boy, I'm envious of Mobile. He says, man, we don't have anything going on. So we sat there and talked about it and he's got a pharmacy and a doctor and insurance agency. They got a lot of stuff. I mean, it's pretty nifty and he felt pretty good about it. And what they can do and should do, um, I, you know, I, there was a little discussion about they ought to have a, um, shovel-ready spot. Only has to be one lot. But if they could get, his comment about no businesses in Woodbury County, that struck me pretty hard. Um, when Rob started at Economic Development, he was told he couldn't go into the towns because you couldn't lose, use, uh, local option sales tax in an incorporated area. That's crazy. Uh, I, I think just, David spends a lot of time out there with those folks, talking about what they can do and how they can do it and grants that they can get. Uh, so I, uh, we're making a full-time job for him, probably two jobs for him when we go out, because they expect him to show up. That's good.
And I agree with all that. I, I just think we need to be careful about going out and talking about all the money we have. And then when the nee- when the real present-day needs come up and they are present-day needs and challenges in those communities and then we have to sit there and say, sorry.
That should be a process.
Can't help.
Yep.
TIP doesn't go for that. You can't use TIP dollars on that. I, I don't know. I just, maybe someone smarter than me can figure out a different approach, but, um.
Anyone else? He is working with Simco. He's been meeting with them. They've been busy. Uh, it's vacation time. I, every time I see him, I ask him, what do you got? What do you got? What do you got? Uh, he's trying to develop something with Simco. They did the last one a few years back in nineteen seventy. Uh, so if he can get them to do that at a fairly reduced rate, uh, there's some discussion of, uh, trying to get them to join Simco. Now, those small towns, we're talking about two, three hundred bucks. They got some little skin in the game, at least for a year. And then we pay the lion's share of it. Um, I don't know what that's going to look like. He's working on that. But that's, yeah, I, they, they've got to have a strategic plan or they can't move forward.
But that's stuff that will have to come to this board too for us to, you know, we need to adopt something to be able to roll it out and, and.
David's got to get it here.
He thought maybe within a month. I asked him his time frame. He thought maybe he could come back with something next month.
He should hurry up. Yeah. Okay, um. The LEC, you have pictures in front of you. This is, um, Mike Neswick's concept. Uh, it, uh, Building Services is a little less than pleased with the circles out front because of shoveling snow. Uh, but I think it's pretty cool.
I think it looks great, but do we need something like that? I mean, that's got to drive the costs way up and we're talking about steps.
Now, it's a big area. So you'd just rather have a clean.
Are they coming back with Plan B or?
This is Plan A. Uh, if you don't like it, we'll go for Plan B. If you like this, um, RLM will draw up an agreement for their services, which a part of that would be putting out the RFP.
From my standpoint, I just think the costs are too great to do this.
Do we know the cost to do this?
We do not.
We moved the handicap ramp from one side to the other. Instead of having steps go up, we raised all this. We put in rails all over the place.
Mm-hmm. So what you're saying is you don't like any of it?
I, I, oh, I like it. I just don't like the cost.
No, it's because I don't know what it is yet. All right, I'll ask, I'll call him and see if he's got a cost factor.
Ask him if there's any cost influence on where the handicap, handicap ramp is.
I can tell you why it goes that way. Because there are two handicap parking spots right at the end of that. If you take it out the other way, they're going to get in and walk into the alley. If you do what's there now, that's awful. Where they go up and over and up and over and up and over.
Of course, there's, there's a reason for that. Instead of one straight push all the way up, there's a resting area and that's why that was built like that.
Yep. Okay. I will, uh, talk to Mike. I think it was pretty cool. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
Andy Schubert, Building Services. Uh, it, it's my thought that the resting area on the handicap area, uh, is, is probably not a good idea. And if there's a way to eliminate that, we probably should. Um, and, uh, I would ask the board to, um, consider that, uh, when we're looking at these, uh, plans, whether we, uh, move forward or not move forward. But, uh, again, uh, we can look at the handicap ramp and see, uh, maybe what the cost differences, differences would be. Um, uh, leaving their current direction versus the new direction. Um, but I would be in support of actually, uh, getting the new direction down toward the parking spaces, uh, where they belong. I, I believe it, you know, it, uh, is a definite safety factor there. Um, I've had a little bit of.
Sorry, why would you take, recommend taking out the rest area for?
Uh, it's difficult for snow removal. It causes some issues there. Uh, there's, a lot of snow gathers on that area and ice. And, uh, from what I understand, it's difficult to remove that snow, uh, anywhere on the location, um, where we can safely place it and, and, and so it doesn't become a problem. Um, also I've, I've discussed this with Mike Neswick with RML a little bit. Uh, as far as future needs for snow removal, um, there's a possibility we could do some de-icing, uh, on the rocks, uh, or in that area, uh, currently like we do at the courthouse.
I, yeah, I asked him when he gets to the RFP to have an alternate for the heated sidewalk.
Right. And, and that's great.
We, you know, if we like it, we like it. And if we don't, we don't.
Right. And, uh, so, yeah, I think we can probably try to get some, uh, estimated numbers from RML and, and, uh, look and see where we want to go from there.
Okay, we'll go around it again. Uh, I have one other thing. Uh, Bob Batzner's funeral is on Friday. Uh, the question is, do we do a group thing or just do it on our own? I guess I would recommend we just do it on our own. Okay. That really shocked me. I didn't think he was ill. Um, we are in the top fifty companies in Woodbury County to generate United Way funding. I have twisted Mr. Gleiser's arm to do it one more year. And we would like to get, um, one of the sheriff's people by the name of Todd Wick to join in. Can we get that? The reason is, uh, we could improve our numbers greatly if we could get some sheriff department just basically. Okay, that'll make Mr. Gleiser very happy. It's a two-year deal. Gleiser goes off the end of this year. Todd has to do it next year, get a new person and then he's done. We can get you after him, right? Uh. Anything else? If not, take a motion to adjourn?
Hello.
Well, let's go home.